Bells are ringing. So let me, let me march on. So I want to talk for just a second about the history of transportation research at UA. So in particular, kind of where did we, where are we coming from and where are we going? And so from the beginning of time to 2016, where the beginning of time, you know, goes back to the seventies and eighties. I don't think any of us really want to think any earlier than that necessarily. There was very limited research on this campus period prior to about 1990. And that was the year I showed up. But from, let's say, 1990 onward in transportation, we, we saw what I would call siloed success. So there were pockets of activity, some of which were very, very successful. Dan Turner, who many of you know, did some really good work here for a lot of years in traffic safety. David Brown as well brought his traffic safety research program over from Auburn in 1991. And there were others and they led kind of their own silos. And silos are interesting because they can grow to the extent that the person leading them is able to grow them. But at that point, they kind of reach a limit. And so in 2017, the UA leadership really tried to execute a paradigm shift. And that paradigm shift really involved trying to bring a lot of those silos together. And so that's where the Transportation Institute was born. And along with some of the other research institutes that came into, to being at about that time, we started to see a little bit of a paradigm shift. And that paradigm shift really is really what I want to talk about here because I want to try to motivate a little bit about what Stephen's going to talk about in terms of the details of these investments. After that point, I showed up and I showed up really kind of on the first day of the pandemic. And I showed up in an environment where people were kind of locked down. And so I had a lot of time to think. And during that period of the first 12 months that I was here, I was really focused on trying to bring some structure to the institute. So the, the first three years of the institute were really kind of startup. And they were a little chaotic because that's the way startups work. But, you know, when I showed up in year four, it was really about trying to structure the organization so that we could really grow. And so I call it structure for scale. And that, and the, the foundation for that scaling is the strategic plan. And the strategic plan lays out an organizational structure in order for, for ATI to grow. And so that's what we did kind of on the first round of things. But then, you know, whoops, no, I didn't go too far. The, the second sort of phase of that is what we're starting now, which is, okay, we have the structure to grow, so let's grow. And that involves, you know, a target that I'm calling just global impact. How do, how do we, how do we go from being structured to grow to actually growing? And that's what we want to talk about today. So, you know, this is the University of Alabama, which is very strong in intercollegiate athletics. And so it seems fitting that we talk about intercollegiate athletics because, you know, why wouldn't we? And so if you look at these two pictures, you might, you know, be motivated to respond to the question at the top, which team are you better off on? And this kind of assumes that you are someone who is either a superstar and aspiring superstar, and you want to exist in a culture of excellence. You're going to pick the, the program to, to go to that is the stronger program. And I don't think I have to tell you which one of those that is between these two. It's the one in red. And so, you know, the answer, of course, is Alabama. And Alabama has created a football dynasty, as you know. And, and my assertion is that you're better off belonging to the dynasty than you are launching your career of excellence in a non dynastic environment. Why? Because if you're in a program that is excellent, it positions you more for future opportunities. It puts you in a position for more interesting work. And it's a place you can go to a conference. And if somebody asks you where you're from, you don't have to kind of look down and mumble the University of Alabama. You know, when you say the University of Alabama, as Nate Oates said the other day, you know, we're, we're, we're not a football school or a basketball school. We're a champion school. And, and that's the, the spirit in which I think you're going to want to answer those questions. That, that ultimately benefits you. It's not about benefiting the university. But, but indeed, your excellence benefits the university and the university's excellence benefits you. It is a symbiotic kind of relationship. And so if you look at these four pictures, you know, I think obviously the football one is, is very germane. But, you know, today's the second day of the NCAA basketball tournament. The number one team is the Gonzaga Zags. Has anybody ever heard of Gonzaga other than in basketball? I won't actually ask that as a serious question because somebody might actually have. And I'm not trying to be disparaging Gonzaga. But you can build a dynasty in a lot of different ways and in a lot of different contexts. You know, UA built its football dynasty on top of a hundred year history. Gonzaga, you know, had a much different base to build on, but they were very successful. Mississippi State is not exactly the center of the universe. But in baseball, they continue to thrive year after year. And clearly, we know about Apple Computer and many other sort of dynastic organizations. They take on an energy of their own and they thrive based on that energy. And so what does it take to build a dynasty? Well, obviously, it takes individual contribution. You know, that's where our faculty come in. That's where you guys come in. It also takes the team. And that's really, as far as this discussion goes, where ATI comes in. And so what does the team provide? Well, there's obviously coaching. There's obviously collaboration. And I'm, I'm going to break out of the athletic model, as tempting as it is to keep talking about basketball. But, you know, it, there's resource investment that comes through the team. And that's one of the things we're going to talk about today. And then there is just the whole idea of sustainability. How do we keep all this going? And so if we look at the ATI side, because that's the part I can talk about, since I'm here representing ATI, I'm going to assume you guys have the, the faculty side covered. So I'm going to talk for just a second about ATI and what ATI is really providing here. And so in particular, there are a couple of things that, that I want to point out that are really changing. One is, I think it's very unique from a leadership perspective that ATI's leadership is really a partnership between a computer scientist and a transportation engineer. That's probably pretty atypical, as far as I can tell, of transportation institutes. But what it does that I think we can really build on is that in a unique and non-competitive way, I mean, it, it does stake out some new territory as far as leveraging the diversity of the future of transportation. And so there's a lot of technology integration that really we're, we're seeing and we're about to see more of in the evolution, the future evolution of transportation. The other piece of this that I think is going to change a little. So in the past, we kind of had a startup model for investment, you know, which was the let a thousand flowers bloom model. You know, let's just plant some seeds and see what grows. And we may get a, a tulip here and a daffodil there and a azalea over there. And we may get some dead plants, you know, in the process. But we're going to get something out of that process and that starts the ball rolling. And I think that's a good model for a startup. But now that we're kind of reached the point where we really want to scale this thing, we really want to look at metrics-driven programs. And we want to look at growth through programs that will enable scaling, like our collaboratories and our collaboration-based communities. And so Stephen's going to talk about that. Okay, so this is the last real slide of substance for me. So I, I think this is a little bit like a water wheel. And, and these four circles are really what I want to see ATI really take on. So, so you can look at the cycle and you can start at any point in the cycle and you can walk around these circles. And you can look at, let's say, infrastructure at the top here. So infrastructure is in lab equipment, as in test tracks, as in, you know, various kinds of things that a researcher would need in order to operate. So that is clearly part of what we're trying to put in place in ATI. We need infrastructure. Why do we need infrastructure? Well, we need infrastructure because our faculty that we're trying to attract here, so that's the talent circle, you know, can use that infrastructure to do their work. And so infrastructure will help us attract talent. When we have talent, we get performance. When we do something good at the performance level, we can market that and essentially demonstrate how good we are. And what happens with that is when you start, right, you have to invest. So, so right now, we've been investing in performance. We kind of picked performance and we said, hey, we're gonna, we're gonna take our existing faculty. We don't, you know, we're not really going to worry too much about talent, although we did hire several folks. And so we have done some of that. We haven't done it in a huge way. We're going to take some dollars and we're going to seed some research and we're going to get something out of that. That's really kind of all we've done at this point. But what we need to do is we're also going to invest in marketing. So part of our dollars this year are really going to marketing because we, we need to be able to talk about what it is we're doing here in the Transportation Institute and at the University of Alabama so that we can make this thing go. If, if nobody knows about what we're doing, then we can be really good and, and, but, but nobody know about it. And so we, we're going to invest in marketing. Oops, did that wrong. I'm going the wrong. Sorry, I think I was confident enough to do this. All right, there we go. We also need to invest in infrastructure in ways that we haven't done so yet. And we're going to continue to invest in talent. But, you know, if all we do is just pour dollars into this thing, you know, we can spin it up a little bit. But what we really need to do is spin this thing around so that it gets its own energy. I mean, if we're just kicking in university dollars on these different pieces, that's not really going to be sustainable. So what we really need to do is we need to, and I just dropped this reputation thing in the middle. We, we need to build the reputation of the University of Alabama in transportation research. And these things together are going to build that. Infrastructure, getting more talent here, doing more things, and then telling the world about it. And as we grow that reputation, it gets bigger and bigger and it starts to energize this machine. Okay? So we start getting more dollars from the outside, better dollars, and it pushes this thing around without us having to put in, and if I guess I, if I were, I just had an idea of how to perfect this really cool slide. But, you know, really, I need to take the dollars off from the blue arrows because what we, what we're trying to do is get this thing spun up so that the reputational benefits that we get from this drive the machine. That's what we're really trying to accomplish here. So what are we trying to do today? Well, we want to get the team on the bus so that we can actually get this thing moving. You know, I think we're doing some good things here and there, but we need everybody on the bus. We need everybody on the team. We need your leadership. Because there's no way we can really talk about the good work that is going on here if we don't have you guys on the bus and on the team and actually doing things that will then reflect on the university so that we can then brag about what the university is doing. And so we need to highlight your work as a member of the team. And what we're trying to do is the second bullet here is to build a sustainable dynasty. We want this water wheel thing on the previous slide to run on its own. And the way it runs on its own is we build the reputation of the University of Alabama in transportation. And the way we can codify that for this discussion is we want to be in the top five transportation institutes in the United States. And so today, what Stephen's going to talk about is rolling out various funding programs and rolling out the collaboratories altogether in a way that it's going to be a lot of material. But what he's trying to really say is we need all these things to work together so that we can do what I just described. Because if we don't do that in five years, we'll be gone. It won't be, you know, it won't be that we'll be able to continue this. We've got to get this thing spun up so that we are sitting in a top-tier organization. And I think that's for the good of all of us collectively as well as individually. So with that speech, I'm going to turn it over to Stephen and then he's going to give you details.
All right. Thanks, Alan. Let me hit the screen share here. No, come on. Okay, screen share. All right. Thanks, Alan. I will run through this. I think, you know, some of you have seen this in some form or another, or certain pieces of it, I should say. So I'm going to run through, this is kind of the, the business operational end of this. If you are hoping for more sports analogies, you come to the wrong place. But I can, I can talk music and movies and a lot of other things. But, but we're going to get down to business here. So the whole idea here is, um, we went through the strategic planning process. You, many of you have seen this. Many of you were, were a part of this, you know, of the, of the four pillars, the one that I'm in charge of and the one that we're here to talk about today is the research pillar. So you've seen some form of this. The whole idea of ATI is to facilitate the research. We will do research. I'm a researcher. Some of you get folks on, on the call are directly employed by ATI and your researchers as well. But, but, but the overall ethos of what we're trying to accomplish here is, is facilitate a, a larger transportation research enterprise across the entire university. So through the strategic planning process, we've organized ourselves around these five themes. And so the purpose today is how are we going to take this from themes? You know, we've all seen mission statements and vision statements and themes and all that. How do we operationalize this and turn this into a, a business plan and then enterprise plan? So a couple of, couple of slides, just, just to pull this out of the strategic plan. So I've highlighted some words here and I'll do this throughout the presentation to, to make some emphasis. This whole idea of facilitating what we're doing here is coordinating. And then you got three areas of support and all three areas that you see there of support coming straight out of the strategic plan, those are where we're going to make investments, these, these, these immediate investments. And some of you will have already received the call for proposals to seek funding in, in those three areas of, of support or, or investment. A little word play here. If you look at facilitate and you think about the idea of coordinate and support and, and go back to what the definition of facilitate is, make easier and help bring about. So I'm going to riff on that a bit. Um, the idea here is we've taken these themes and now, and again, some of you guys have seen some, some, you know, versions of this. This has been a work in progress. So we're rolling out these five collaboratories to address the five themes. And these are intended to be a focal point of centers, individual researchers, new labs. Here's the idea of lab proposals and such that, that we're investing in. This is how we're going to operationalize and get this work done and, and make a name for ourself and all the things that Alan talked about, building our reputation and, and driving this machine, this water wheel, this flywheel, whatever you want to call it, to spin this up and do more and do better. So as we roll out these collaboratories officially over the next couple of weeks, or a few weeks, rather, each one, each collaboratory will have an ATI designated facilitator. And understand the word there, facilitator. There's not a leader there. These, these, the, the collaboratories, they are not centers, they are not labs, they are not functional organizational entities, right? They are there to, to create a nucleus, right, for, for activity within and around that theme. And so the facilitators are going to be there to help run that and help coordinate that, facilitate, right? And one of the main things we're going to do is provide proposal support. Where, where can we go get money that's appropriate for us to get? And then once we identify that, how are we going to do it? ATI is going to be, play a major role in, in helping out with that. One of the things we've already started is, this is a, you know, workflow kind of thing. Trello happens to be the package. And, and don't worry about the details here. But basically what happens now is projects come in here on the left in the inbox to start. And then they move their way across here. Some of them get handed off to folks outside of ATI. Some of them get submitted. Some of them we decide that we don't submit. And of course, sometimes things get submitted and rejected, but we're tracking this, right? We're tracking this and we're going to make this, you know, a process because we want to do this at enterprise scale. And eventually, we get enough of this done and we track, you know, not the performance of who's doing what, because ATI is not playing an enforcer role here. You know, we, we, we're bringing opportunities and we're trying to, to help people go after opportunities you know, from the best position they can, but there's no enforcement role. But, you know, as we, as we do this over time, we're going to build up an institutional memory. And to some extent, you know, maybe build up some data where we can moneyball this, right? So what, what proposals are successful, from what agencies, what groups seem to be hitting, you know, more success and what areas, which of our themes are running really strong? Which ones are maybe lagging behind and maybe need some more investment? So this is going to be, you know, sort of a foundational part of the whole doing this at enterprise scale. But also what we're going to do is as we continue to develop proposals, you know, what I would like to see is the, is the collaboratories get together and, and deconstruct, dissect some proposals. You know, if there was one that was really good, why was it good? What are the elements that made it good? What are the elements that maybe made it not successful? We're going to build up this library and all along the way, we're going to continue generating ideas, both ideas that we went after, but ideas that we may want to go after in the future. And you saw some of those ideas get presented in the call for proposals. And this is just an initial list of the ideas. And this is kind of the internal ATI, the leadership and some of the other people and conversations we've had. But this is by no means exhaustive. But while it's not exhaustive, I'd say it's pretty broad. And there's, there's a pretty, pretty, pretty good opportunity for people all over campus to get involved and plugged into ATI and this overall transportation research enterprise, right? So, um, the other thing that we're going to do is I'm going to empower, for lack of a better word, the facilitators to really help bring up, you know, market these collaboratories and, and the ideas behind them, theme-specific outreach. It may be that, that, you know, collaboratory A may say, hey, we got so much going on, we need our own website. Another collaboratory may say, well, we've got so much going on. We need to have a little mini conference to showcase and highlight all the great stuff that's going on. And so that's where ATI comes in. We're going to invest in that. Somebody needs conference dollars. Somebody needs website funds, all the different things. We're going to make investments to make this stuff happen and get the word out on this stuff. And the other thing we're going to do, and you, and if you've seen the call for proposals, is we're going to sort of seed the collaboratory activities around some signature projects. And, you know, this did not happen in a vacuum. There's been lots of discussions. But for each of the five collaboratories, these are the signature projects. And I am intentionally, I won't say vague, but intentionally sort of high level, 30,000 foot view. These are ideas, these are titles, these are the beginnings of conversations. Some of these are things that, that focus on areas where we've got a lot of really great stuff going on. This Transportation Systems Management and Operations 2040. We got a lot of really great stuff going on right now at the University of Alabama. We have things going on that other universities I know for a fact are envious of and, and, and taking a look at. So we, we want to, we want to double down on, on that winning horse. Sports analogy, um, the transportation research data lake. I don't know of other institutions doing this kind of thing. But, but if we can pull this together and we have a really, really strong collaborative data ecosystem where we share and support and store and collect transportation data from all sorts of sources, I think this could be a really, really unique thing that we can spin off all kinds of applications. Machine learning, all sorts of things we can do with, you know, big data. The electric vehicle research, that's something that, that, you know, we, we've got a head of steam. But there's going to be some more announcements coming out of the university here in the not-too-distant future that, you know, we're going to capitalize, not just on things going on for the University of Alabama, but things that are going on in the state of Alabama. We've got automakers here that are pushing this. There's a lot of really great momentum. And ATI is not going to be left behind in that march towards electric vehicles. We're going to be a leader in that. That's the plan. And you can see the others and you can think of all the different things. Transportation safety technology, that's everything from, you know, better ways to collect transportation safety data, crash data, all the way to what are the technologies that will make cars safer before we get to automated self-driving? And these collaboratories and these signature projects, the idea is that these will be faculty-driven. So these get turned over to the collaboratories and the members of those collaboratories, whether they're center directors, individual faculty affiliates, whatever the graduate students, postdocs, whatever the, the composition is, they're the ones that are going to drive this and make this happen. And they're the ones that are going to come back to ATI leadership, to, to me and Alan. And then we're going to make investments. We're going to, we're going to buy more data. We're going to buy equipment. We're going to do all the things that we need to do to make investments, to spin all of this up. So the investments, right? So this is the call for proposals that, that went out earlier this week. I'll start with the easiest one first. We're going to invest in graduate students. And we're looking to fund at least 15 graduate students. That's what I put the number on now. Depending on the funding and the strategies, we may come around later in the summer and say, hey, we actually have a bit more funding. Let's bring in some new graduate student proposals. We're going to talk about, we're going to invest in new labs. And we're going to invest in, I put here quote, new transportation research. A bit of detail on that. So the grad student is, is, is the easiest one. We want to get the proposals in, you know, pretty quickly this spring. They're not too complicated so that we can make some funding allocations and make decisions. So people that are, that are recruiting students and doing all the things we need to do to have students in place for fall semester, starting 16 August, you know, people will be ready and, and, and know where they stand in terms of IT, ATI funding. So, so this one's pretty straightforward. And this is the kind of things we're looking for. Obviously, if you, if, if someone wants a graduate student, they need to show how does it support one or more of the themes, right? And then how does the student fit into the overall researcher's portfolio? Is this a researcher that has 25 graduate students and they just want to add another to the stable? Is this a researcher that has twenty-five graduate students and they just want to add another to the stable? Um, or is this somebody that's a new uh faculty member, a new researcher, and this is a critical investment? There's all sorts of ways to to look at this. And one of the things that I'm going to be particularly interested in is what's the plan to 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 spend the student off of ATI funding? Because the sooner they can get off on some uh National Science Foundation, US DOT, Department of Energy, wherever we're going to fund these students, then that allows me, that allows us to free up funds for the next cycle next year to bring in and recruit new students. Um, the next one here, this idea of new transportation research, I want to talk about that for a minute, but I want to make one quick clerical thing. I'm going to reissue uh uh the the call here because in the call I erroneously put in that that these were due on uh April sixteenth. They are due June fourth because we want to give people some time to get past the semester and spend some time over the summer thinking about this. But I'm going to reissue this, there was a small typo, I'm still trying to figure out a way to monetize typos because if I did, I would be a rich person and I would no longer be here working at UA and ATI. Um, but that said, I'm I'm going to, I'm going to make a an addenda to that. But but here's the deal, we're going to take these proposals in. And also the timing here in the summer is we're going to discuss these and vet these out within the collaboratories after they've been kicked off. Because the collaboratories are that faculty-driven, that researcher-driven expert uh uh collection and 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 we want to see where the new transportation research fits into into the collaboratory, where it fits into the signature projects. And by new transportation research, I mean, we may find someone from some department somewhere across the university who has not traditionally done transportation research, but may have some pretty interesting ideas that could connect and somehow shape and 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 complement some of the work we're doing. Or it may be someone who's built their career in one area of transportation research and is now ready to pivot pivot off to a new area, use their experience, use their momentum and oh essentially open up a new front. Um, so the kind of things we want to do, again, does it support the themes, does it support the collaboratories? What sort of um uh opportunities does it create? Is this new research, is it fertile in terms of bringing in new research funding from external sources? Obviously, that's important, but Alan used the term reputation there. Maybe somebody's got a new research area that they want to open up and and maybe there's not some immediate funding that we see right now. But this is something that somebody's going to write some um some really, really high impact articles and, you know, the Journal of Nature or something. And uh and and, you know, many of you have been in academics long enough. I mean, this, the these impact factors and these sort of things are, you know, th- this is how we stake out territory and plant flags and things. And so um I'm looking to to invest in things that 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 aren't just immediately um, you know, where where the return on investment is not necessarily more dollars in the door, but maybe we're playing a longer game because we're upping our our scholarly profile. And this has expanded our research focus and capacity. I mentioned that we've already got some really great um uh momentum, some really great research going on in and around electric vehicles. But there's a whole other other side to this, this is just something that that I that I have seen recently. Um, there's the technology aspect of it and we've got some really strong research and we'll and we'll continue to do more on the technology side. But there are other more human socioeconomic political issues um associated with some of these technologies. And there may be people in 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 in, you know, fields that don't traditionally uh conduct research in transportation, social work, economics, other, maybe not economics. Um, but 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 some of the others that 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 may bring in a new perspective and help round out our portfolio and 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 create a a stronger, more holistic um footprint of what we're doing within each of these themes. All right, so here's the big one, the labs. So again, over and over and over, it's got to support the themes and the themes are are how we drive the collaboratories. So it needs to be something that that meshes well into the collaboratories. And we need to know how does it relate to the signature projects? It may be something that very closely um complements or builds on the signal, the signature project, and that's great. Or it may be something that's a complete departure and 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 goes in a different direction of the signature project, but also has an enormous amount of potential and 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 promise on its own. And and therefore that 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 deserves attention and perhaps investment as well. So so we're we're not, we're not coming into this, you know, with a with a predetermined outcome or or a closed mind at all. And so if you if you look at the larger collaboratory um ecosystem here, so the 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 gray ones here, these are existing centers. Here's CAPS, Institute for Business Analytics. Um, but we've already have one established lab that looks at emerging communications and resilience, disaster preparedness and that sort of thing. So we already have one lab and so I'm showing this to 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 make the point that what we want are labs that are going to fit into the collaboratories and expand what they do. Now, obviously, we want to see, you know, what what sort of opportunities are these uh labs going to unlock? Is it going to unlock dollars, is it going to unlock um a a whole new field of, you know, maybe there's some basic research needs to be done, it's not necessarily going to hit the the uh pull the money levers right, right now. But in some time in the not too distant future, because of the scholarly impact and the visibility and the reputation building that that we get out of this lab, it's going to pay off in lots of ways uh in the future. And again, expand the research and focus capacity, just like the new research. So the sustainability issues, right? Um, we want to see how it how it fits and supports with the signature projects because that is going to be the sustainability of those collaboratories and um, because we we want to do this more than once, right? So the idea is that, you know, if labs come on board, what is it, what is a lab's plan to transition off of ATI funding? What's the timeframe, where would that, where would that funding come from? So that we can then move the, take that investment from from that lab, once it becomes a bit more self-sufficient and go invest in new labs and that's how we continue to 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 grow the enterprise. So the process on this one, again, the 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 dates here are fine and I'll I'll reissue the the addendum on the on the new transportation researcher one. But one of the points I want to make here is is the second bullet point on external reviewers and stakeholders. Um, um, I've I've already had some initial conversations and we're going to bring in some folks confidentially um from the outside, because this is going to be a process that I want everyone at the University of Alabama and certainly anyone outside to know that 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 this is not, you know, you know, off your backroom deals, you know, parsing out ATI money. This is a rigorous, robust academically competitive process to spin up these labs and make investments. I mean, I won't say it rises to the level of an NSF review panel, but but we're going to do this and we're going to document it and we're going to give feedback and and review results, we're going to shortlist, then we're going to interview the second round results. And because ATI functions on um on on the fiscal year, then we will be in a position to 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 drop these investments and and get and get these labs started officially off the ground and running um in October of this year. And they um are renewable. Now, I put renewable there in italics because, I mean, that depends, I mean, what, you know, does it need to be renewed? In some cases, we may get lab proposals that say, hey, I don't know that this is something that's going to spin off into a center and be around at the University of Alabama for the next five or fifteen years, but there's a really hot topic that we need to focus on and go hard at right now and a lab is the way to do it. And if that's the way to do it and it's not something that's going to renew after a year or two years or whatever, that's fine too. So again, we are not coming into this closed-minded with a preconceived, you know, predetermined outcome. Other investments, look, no, no, this, this is where, you know, it just necessarily becomes a bit less formal. And and so one of the things that I want to do is this idea of the collaboratories and and town halls and communications. We're going to keep an open dialogue, this is, you know, I don't want any of this done in backroom dealings and all that. Um, so there will be opportunities, someone's going to come to me, come to Alan, come to ATI and say, hey, I've got an opportunity to 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 put in a proposal, but I need some matching funds. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a federal agency and they require twenty-five percent or fifty percent cost share. Well, let's have those discussions because we want to make investments that make you all successful, right? And it may be that you need a cash match, maybe you need a a some unique piece of equipment. And if we don't have that widget, you can't do that research. Or maybe you just need some help and there's lots of different ways to do that. A number of you on this call are actually ATI research staff. And there's a lot of talented folks with a bunch of different skills working for ATI. So maybe you don't need a cash match, maybe you need some, 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 some devoted time from some of our ATI researchers and we can use that, their salary benefits and all the financial aspects of 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 their effort as in-kind match to match your proposals. And 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 let's have those discussions, we will, we will have those discussions throughout the year. That's why this is not part of a uh a formal call for proposals because, you know, these things don't happen on any cycle that Alan and I would 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 generate, right? And then there's the research projects. Um, look, somebody comes to me and they and they say, I have, I have written this paper with my students, my postdocs or whatever, and it is a really amazing paper and we think we can get it in this high-impact journal and we think we could get a lot of citations for the University of Alabama, but we think we could get a whole lot more if we paid the fee to do it open access, let's have those conversations. One day, we're going to be able to travel again, you see my um uh Zoom background here, this is about as close as I get to traveling these days. But, you know, we need to get out there, we need to go to this conference and say, hey, look at UA, look at, look, look at ATI. And um and if it's transportation research, um, you know, we're here to 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 make those investments and 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 to help you all do that and get the word out and 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 that sort of thing. And then there's special circumstances and contingencies. At some point in time, someone is going to come to ATI and say, hey, I've got this great student that's been working, you know, producing, doing all this great work on this NSF project, but the project has ended, the funding's gone and the student needs another semester to finish their dissertation and write all the papers. Um, can ATI help bridge um the funding to keep that student, you know, engaged and employed and a paycheck and all that? That's, that's, that's an important part of what we're here for, all sorts of cer- special circumstances and contingencies will come up. And 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 I, Alan, we want to have those conversations because that what, that's what we're here to do is to facilitate, to support the research enterprise. I'm about to wrap up here, um, uh, as we go along, any, any of you that hear me um or interact with me, you know, in the next year or so, you're going to get tired of hearing me say university transportation center. But pretty soon, the US DOT is going to open up the university transportation center competitions. And um, we don't know what it's going to look like or exactly when it's going to be, obviously, plenty of things need to get worked out and settled in Washington. But when that hits, we're going to be ready. And the goal is, is that we're going to have at least one university transportation center here at the University of Alabama. So there's going to be lots of conversations and a lot of energy spent on this in the coming years. One of the things that we're doing um that that Alan has initiated and is this idea of benchmarking. If you go to the ATI uh website, um, you know, we have this sort of impact um in terms of like, hey, well, you know, what have we done, I mean, what are we contributing so far? And let me tell you, we haven't, we haven't started the 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 formal um benchmarking yet. But if you just start looking at the numbers and kind of the basics, the raw data, we we're on the field, again, sports analogy, um, we're on the field, right? I mean, we 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 actually look, look pretty strong and we're a new kid on the block, right? So what we're going to do is we're going to start looking at what are the other major player transportation, university-based transportation institutes around the country, how do we stack up against them? Um, uh, dollars in the door, number of uh researchers employed, number of papers out the door, all the things that we we in academics know, how we measure our 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 self-worth and, you know, um, ability to continue existing on the earth, right? Um, but we're going to go through this and and we're going, we're going to come out with metrics and 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 then we're going to set targets and start knocking down the list, Alan said top five, I can't tell you which one of these are one, two, three, four, five, but I can tell you that 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 we stack up pretty well against some of these, perhaps better than you might think at this point already. So um, and and again, we're, you know, just a few years old, so we keep up this head of steam, we keep up this momentum. The idea is, you know, T minus whatever timeframe you want to get, I want these guys to come back and benchmark against us, right? And then not only from the idea of benchmarking and looking at, you know, what what the competition is, for lack of a better term, in terms of uh the other institutes, but but we have the themes, right? So it may be that there are other institutions that maybe, maybe it's not that they have, meaning universities. Maybe, maybe it's not um the overall transportation institute that we need to uh look at what they're doing and compare us, our compare and benchmark ourselves against, maybe it's someone that doesn't even have an institute, but maybe they are absolutely just rocking things in electric vehicles. So we want to see how we stack up against that and where we need to be in terms um uh or 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 in relation to that. So we're going through this exercise now and 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 these will be ongoing conversations. Some of you will be involved directly in these conversations, some indirectly. But but I think it's important for for you all to understand that this is going on and that this is important. Other things that we're doing, um, we are going to have, you know, barring COVID resurgences and things beyond my control, we are going to have an internal ATI research showcase in November of this year. And that's going to, I don't, whether it's the Ferguson Center or Shelby Hall or some, you know, wherever it needs to be, North Lawn, wherever we can get all the great people at the University of Alabama um that are that are doing or interested in transportation-related research, we're going to have a big um pep rally, again, sports analogy, right? Um, we're going to have a big pep rally and we're going to celebrate and exchange what we're doing. But the big thing is that's going to be a dry run, a dress rehearsal, because I'm just going to assume that by April twenty twenty-two, we can start inviting people from some of those other institutes, federal agencies, US DOT, Alabama DOT, Georgia DOT. Um, we are actually already getting a little money out of the Georgia DOT already right now, but that's another story. Um, we're going to bring them to Tuscaloosa and we're going to have a summit and we're going to showcase this and we're going to put on a show and we're going to allow others to present their work and it's going to be a larger exchange. And that's going to put us on um on 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 a uh a visibility and a, you know, on on the radar of everyone else going forward, particularly the folks that will be um making selections and and uh looking at the university transportation center competition, which, you know, the word from Washington and the tea leaves is will probably come out sometime in spring of twenty twenty-two. Um, other things that we're doing is um uh working with ORED, Office of Research and Economic Development, creating new positions. We're already changing and looking at new uh research positions, um, some, because of the technology developer and uh programming positions. And we are, we are formally beginning the process to to start um creating research faculty positions. So so actual, you know, PhD-level researchers that are embedded in the faculty, civil engineering, electrical engineering, economics, geography, wherever they are, but they are research faculty positions, paid by ATI, but they become a an excellent academic intellectual bridge between the academic um uh units and ATI and we just keep this machine going. Also, you can imagine that will be a really interesting and really, I think, attractive uh tool for us to recruit more talent coming in. Um, so the other major next step is beginning the week of the twenty-ninth, I got five uh research themes, five collaboratories, so beginning the week of the twenty-ninth, we're going to start those kickoff meetings. There'll be some more information and um signups and and invitations for that as 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 we, as we schedule those going forward. But we're going to kick these things off officially beginning in March so that over the summer, we can kind of work out the kinks or whatever with the collaboratories, get the right people in place. Everybody get their head around these signature projects, will understand what the 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 grad student funding, the lab funding and the new research funding, what that sort of looks like. And then we 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 come into fall twenty twenty-one, fall semester, we will hit the ground running. And as Alan said, we 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 will have moved out of that startup phase and 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 after the benchmarking, everything else, we will be among the other national-level transportation institutes, full head of steam moving forward. That's all I got, um, uh, we've got a few minutes, uh, sorry, there's an alarm going off here. So I'm going to stop sharing and uh mute my machine right now to spare you the the alarm and any questions for me, any questions for Alan?
Uh, I have a question on the lab. So when when we says, you know, one new lab, so does this lab has a physical space or has a, so we talk about uh hardware or other devices or softwares, so how would that be?
Um, well, that's actually a very good question, I I I mean, you know, I apologize for the for the sirens here.
You got fire trucks too, Stephen, I mean, you're good.
Well, that's true, well, they uh, um, well, if anybody had any, any, any doubts, I am working from home and this is what downtown Birmingham sounds like most of the time, so, um, anyway, the um, uh, Jaiyan, that's, that's a very good question, now, 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 physical lab the, um, uh, Jialian, that's, that's a very good question. Now, 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 physical lab space, that, that, that is, I will just be perfectly honest, that, that is, that is an issue and a question that, 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 that goes beyond me or Alan or, 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 or ATI specifically. Um, obviously, we, we, we will, uh, work with and, and happy to engage in those discussions, but the rest of the infrastructure in terms of equipment, data and that sort of thing, that is, that is very much a part of the, um, uh, the kind of things that we're looking for in the lab proposals, right? Um, I mean, there, there are the, the lab proposals and, and, and as, as it shows in the, um, uh, in the call for proposals, you know, there, there are a number of things that, that are, you know, for lack of, you know, eligible for funding under the proposals. Um, but, you know, if you get down to the point where you have specific questions, Jialian, please don't, don't, don't hesitate to reach out to me and, you know, we can, we can talk about some specific things because it may be that there's something, equipment or otherwise, that you're thinking about this proposal. And a- anyway, let's, let's, let's have specific conversations, um, going forward. But yes, I mean, we, we are looking to invest in labs and that will take a lot of different forms.
Thanks, thanks. You know, this is kind of, you know, help us, help me at least to, to see what kind of things in the feasible, uh, you know, and what, what scope. It's good. Thank you.
You know, and if I don't get enough, uh, proposals, that means I'll have a little extra money to spend and maybe, maybe Alex Hanen will get his bucket truck.
Can you, can you?
That's too damn easy. Don't give me opportunities like that.
A bucket truck could be useful and a bucket truck could be a lot of fun as well.
I'm not arguing with that. I'm arguing about giving one to Alex. I, that's just dangerous.
Fair, fair.
You're muted, Alex.
Which is the best way to leave you.
Yeah, I had a blast in the bucket truck. I'm making good friends with the electrician so I can keep going up in it. I might get a new job. That might be the next thing for me.
Okay.
Any more questions? Comments, complaints? Well, send the complaints via email. Or send them to John.
To John by email, because I know what that little red X means.
Um, all right, listen, y'all, the, uh, I can give you back three minutes of your Friday.
I'll take ten, I'll take ten seconds though, Stephen. I think this sounds pretty exciting. I've been, you and Alan have done a lot in the last few months. It's cool to see this stuff going in this direction.
No, I, I think, I think it's good. And, and, you know, and it'll be interesting. We haven't formally started this benchmarking, but, um, one of the things I taught, what I didn't explicitly mention in the benchmarking, um, uh, because there's not really a lot to benchmark, but, you know, I'm sure everybody on the screen knows that, uh, Auburn has just recently spun up a transportation research institute. Um, so sticking with, well, so, so, so sticking with Alan's, um, uh, uh, sports theme, to that, I'm just gonna say game on.
But we wanna work with them.
Exactly. It's always better to cooperate than to compete.
That's right. And, and we are, we are actually looking at reaching out and trying to, to build some bridges there. No kidding. But, um, you know, at the same time, I feel like we're in a really good spot relative to Auburn and we want to continue to be. If, if I have to compare us to Auburn, I'd rather than be behind us all the time trying to catch up than the other way around. So.
Absolutely. All right, two minutes of free time and counting.
Okay.
All right, y'all. Have a good weekend and there'll be more emails coming out and, you know, obviously, you know, questions following up on this, certainly questions on the, on the call for lab proposal or, or all the, you know, grad student, all the call for proposals, as it says in the, in, in there, uh, hit me up with questions or if, um, if, 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 if you want also, also Alan. Um, but, uh, we're, we're, this is launched. Collaboratories are rolling out at the end of the month and, 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 and we're off to the races.
Okay. Thank y'all.
Take care.